Okay, we'll get going. My apologies for the slight delay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Stewart, the mayor, and on behalf of city council, I'd like to welcome everyone this evening. If protocol would demand that, I also welcome my good friend, my friend, no, my neighbor, Mayor Mike Clay is in the audience from Port Moody, watching how a good public hearing goes, I guess. Welcome, Mike. Time will tell. This is a public hearing into the bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that the public hearing be held to get the public's point of view. Staff from the city's Planning and Development Department will present a summary of each proposed bylaw one at a time and then one at a time. The floor will be open to anyone in attendance that wants to present his or her views on the proposed bylaw. Those that have pre-registered will be given the first opportunity to speak. So, we, this is how we'll run up our public hearings. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input, and none of us has prejudged the outcome of these applications or these bylaws. But the rules are that it's not a question and answer, period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits or otherwise of the proposed bylaws with either council members, staff, or people in the audience with whom you might have a different, or against whom you might have a different point of view. So, we ask everyone, in the interest of making sure everyone is properly and fairly heard and that everyone feels comfortable, and we realize that a microphone can be uncomfortable, we want everyone to feel comfortable. So, we ask that everyone please restrict their comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible. We're asking speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak is able to do so. You can take more than one five-minute time period, but if you've got some more good stuff, please get into the back of the line and we'll let you speak again. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. And to that end, we actually urge you not to clap, not to boo, not to cheer, not to jeer any of the presentations made tonight. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that does not relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or which becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. Please note, if you wish to provide a written submission to be included in the record of the meeting, you must hand that submission to the clerk's desk prior to the adjournment of the related item on the agenda. After the item is adjourned, council cannot receive any further information until the item is either given forth reading or rejected by council. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, a regular meeting will convene in order that council can give considerations to a number of items on the council agenda, but also the items on the public hearing agenda. If, however, during the public hearing, council requests further information related to an item or a council member asks that it, that the vote be deferred, consideration of the item will be deferred pending receipt of the requested information or to a subsequent meeting. I will now call on Mr. Gilbert to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda and the Planning and Development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, your worship. First item this evening is an application to amend the City of Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3000 in order to adjust how the maximum permitted perimeter wall height and perimeter wall area are administered in the zoning bylaw. This is bylaw number 4587. We have introductory comments by the general manager of Planning and Development, and following Mr. McIntyre's comments, Mr. Bontempo will come forward to speak directly to the bylaw.
Mr. McIntyre.
Yes, thank you, worship, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members. Actually, I was just going to turn it over to Jim Bontempo, our manager of building permits approvals. He has a brief slide presentation he'd like to walk through with council and the audience to explain the proposed amendments, which regarably get a little technical, but I think with this presentation, they become much clearer. And so, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good evening, worshiped members of council. On September 8th, during our presentation, council expressed some concerns and made some requests that perhaps staff revisit the way we portrayed some of the information. The information is fairly complex, and we thought that maybe there might be a better way to visualize it. So, we did, and we went away and we did some thinking, and one of my staff suggested that perhaps it may be a better approach to put the proposed amendments, which are particularly about perimeter wall height and perimeter wall area, in context with all of the zoning regulations, and we'll take you through from beginning to end. And I think that that might assist you in understanding how, how the amendments tonight fit in the bigger context of, of the zones. So, what you have is a standard RS1 lot in the city of Coquitlam. Typical lots are ranging from about 66 feet of frontage to 70, 72, and 74 feet. Proximate area of a typical lot is about 8,000, 9,000 square feet. They can reach between 7 and 10. But for purposes of tonight, we're going to use this lot. First thing that we're going to apply to that lot are setbacks. And we talked about setbacks quite a few months ago. In RS1, the setbacks are the 25 feet or 7.6 meters front yard and rear yard, and we have a 1.8 meter or six-foot side yard. What that does is shows you that automatically, the building footprint, the potential footprint is now down to about 40, 42,000, or 4,200 square feet. What we're going to do next is apply our site coverage. If you recall, site coverage is a fairly new rule, about two years old. In Coquitlam, we have 45% site coverage permitted. So, in this case, 45% would take approximately about another 8 to 10% off the buildable area, and it would reduce the lot to about 3824 buildable envelope. So, the next thing we're going to do is we're going to apply the maximum height limit. And that maximum height, 11 meters, 36 feet, will present you with a box, a building envelope, a three-dimensional envelope, shown on the screen. And keep in mind that the building faces, potential on the front and rear faces is over 2,000 square feet, and on each side, approximately 23 to 2,400 square feet, building face. Now, we're going to get into our perimeter wall height and perimeter wall area, and if you recall, these rules were brought in in the 90s to take that box and articulate it further. So, to scale, this is what you're going to start to see. You're going to see about 1,000 square feet maximum area on each wall face that's going to be permitted at that setback line. And I think that's where there was some difficulty in being able to visualize last September. You can also see on this diagram that there is a maximum 20-foot maximum perimeter wall height average. Now, keep in mind, this is a flat site, so you would see a line that would travel across your building face at 20 feet. And if you recall, as the slope of the site increases, you get some extra space or ability to raise that height and average to compensate for the slope. And, and also keep in mind that along that building face, you may get portions of the building higher, and you may get portions of the building lower, but on average, you're going to have 20 feet. The 45-degree rule is now applied. So, what we're going to do is we're going to travel 20 feet up the side of the building face, and we're going to angle in at 45 degrees. So, on the side yards, this is what you're going to see. So, the building envelope's reduced. Apply that to the front and the rear yard, and this is, this is the building envelope The next piece is, this is where designers need to start to use their skills, and that is, if you recall, along that outermost building face, you had a maximum of 1,000 square feet and limited amount of wall that could be on that outermost building face. So, this is what forces designers to start to articulate their wall faces. If you also recall, when we looked at site coverage as one of the tools that we might modify, here's another reason why many of the homes aren't reaching the full 45% site coverage, because we've already reduced site coverage through this articulation, probably by another 10 or 15 and even 20%. So, this is, this is the building envelope that remains, 2695, after that perimeter wall area and height are applied. And if we've screwed that upward to a typical one-floor, which is about nine feet, this is what you're starting to see in terms of the massing. Now, if you recall, with the 45-degree incline, you're going to be starting to cut into the second floor. Depending on where the second floor walls are, there'll be certain amounts of limitations. In this case, some of the second floor walls will be out at the first floor face, and others will have to be pushed back. And in this case, you're going to get a, a second floor envelope of about 2,000 square feet. Now, keep in mind, these are gross figures, so this isn't what you would get in a net floor area. These are gross. These are outside walls. And, and that's extruded through another nine feet for a second floor. So, what we would then do is, I've, I've shown this example of, of a feature, and that feature could be anything. The point was to show that sometimes parts of buildings will exceed past the 45-degree plane, which is what I've done here. So, if, for example, a feature laid outside that 45-degree plane, the old rules would say, we would have to go back to the applicant and say, "You violated that rule. Go back and, and revise your drawings." The options to the designer would be to remove the feature, the offending piece, or reduce it in size, push it back out to the outermost building face, where if there was enough room in their average, they would push it back out and increase the massing along that outermost building face. The designers are going to do this because they're going to lose floor area in the feature, and they're going to want to make it up somewhere else. And that's the dilemma that we face, is quite often, the designer will meet the rules by applying this technique, but it's really not what's desired. So, what we propose in the amendment is that if you do violate that 45-degree line, that you can keep that feature, but it's going to be averaged in with the entire second floor. So, the massing, again, is all averaged out. We feel that that's a better final building form than this. Just a general sense of, of what our zoning regulations are producing today in terms of scale on the lot. And this is a typical building that was built through the 50s and 60s. The red box represents what could have been built in 1958 in that zone. And thankfully, not many buildings were built like that, but there are one or two, and it's interesting because the demand for housing at that time was such that no one would really want that much square footage on a lot. But that's what you could achieve in 1958 with our zone.
Okay. Thank you. And our first speaker's been before us before on this issue, Mr. Holowenki. Ken?
Hello, my name is Ken Holowenki, 873 Thermal, Coquitlam. I'm making a presentation on this item one, stating my opposition to acceptance, not necessarily because the, the rules as depicted are wrong, but I am, have a lot of concern that this would be council's direction to completely solve the monster home issue by this one amendment, and there was not going to be any more forthcoming. Unless at this time, council can assure us that it's not completing the goal of minimizing the adverse impacts of large homes, but is indeed only one of many steps in that direction. Also, you could assure us that it doesn't tie up any more comments on other issues besides the perimeter wall height, as they would, because once it goes into public hearing now, you're not allowed to talk about it anymore. Does that mean you're not allowed to talk about any issues relating to large homes until it's resolved, or is it just the perimeter wall part of it? I understand I'm not supposed to ask questions.
Actually, it's fine. I will, I will clear that up. The issue associated with this bylaw, which is perimeter wall height issue, after tonight's public hearing is finished, we, we won't be able to talk about it until we've voted on it, either given it forth reading or rejected it, which probably will take place tonight, either the giving it forth reading or rejecting it. So, I suspect it won't, you won't be hampered. But in any case, you can always come to us and talk to us about other issues associated. And I know you have other issues, floor space and all that kind of thing. You can come to us because they're not the content of tonight's public hearing.
That was a major concern.
Yep.
And the reason I, I, I am concerned is, meeting back in July 30th, where the, 2012, where the 45% rule was adopted by council, there was a lot of back and forth about exactly what that meant and why it was indeed the largest of any other municipality. The entire council voted in favor of accepting the 45% on the proviso that staff would get back to them with a better explanation or more input on it. However, it is now three and a half years later that we're getting any input on that at all officially. In the meantime, many monster homes were built and, and many residents were seriously affected, so want to make sure that that doesn't happen again by, that, by accepting this amendment, that the next one will be another three and a half years later. Without those insurances, there's just no reason to believe that this time around is going to be any different. The following points, which I have learned a little bit from this presentation, it did clarify things a lot. The amendments themselves are not contested and are welcome, but only as a step in the direction of alleviating the issue, the complex method of computation notwithstanding. They offer no change to the maximum allowable roofline height, 36 feet, one of the most aggravating issues in established areas, especially where there's a lot of views. Coquitlam is a very hilly area. Associated loss of viewscapes, blockages of sunlight, remains the highest allowable roofline height of any local jurisdiction. The 45-degree rule of, is spoken of, is very good for aesthetics and to limit the bulkiness, the perfect presentation to show that, how it breaks it all up. But it's toothless from the point of view, no pun intended, that it excludes dormers and gable ends, which are still allowed to have that maximum roofline height of 36 feet. So, depending on the orientation of the roofline on the property, you could, that 36 feet could extend out a lot and still block, block views. Once again, I'm talking about established areas of Coquitlam where it wasn't reasonable to expect such big changes. Major discussion that there's still no change in the maximum lot coverage. Still, I feel is one of the most important factors. It's used extensively in all other jurisdictions. Staff indicates that it would be a substantial reduction from 45% to have any effect, and that is my point, reduce it substantially, or indeed the sliding scale for super-large lots. The staff report showed Maple Ridge actually does have a higher allowable lot coverage, using a figure of 50%. However, I have a bit of an issue. It seems like that was cherry-picked from all other zones in Maple Ridge's urban residential designation. All of their other zones have 40% maximum coverage, as does Burnaby and North Van and a lot of other. So, other municipalities are still balking at increasing their lot coverage, other than that one cherry-picked zone in Maple Ridge. The lot coverage also relates to the size of the excavation that could happen for the basement area, and if the excavation's extremely deep, it needs to be extended way out to the property line, which means all the trees come down because they need safety for working in that depth. I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on that because it's not directly related to this amendment, and I have made that point before. In the R2 Maple Ridge zone cited, the maximum permitted height is 9.75 meters less, and in the other zones of Maple Ridge, it's even less than that, at 9.5 meters. Maximum height in Burnaby, nine meters. Coquitlam remains at 11 meters. Once again, this all pertains to whether this is a step in the direction, or it's going to be deemed as the problem solved, and don't come to us with any more questions on monster Not part of this amendment, I'll just briefly touch on the concept of an extra zone, I believe was overly complicated in the report. The intent there was that there would be one zone created that covers long-established areas that are definitely distinct from new areas. It wouldn't be a whole bunch of zones, depending on each neighborhood. Everyone that would be in that zone would have perhaps a reduced lot coverage, reduced roofline height, and it would just be by street address, you're in that zone, even if they're not contiguous to one another. I had another minor issue with the way, the number of responses to the open house was stated as a miniscule percentage figure. I, I don't think that serves a useful purpose, other than sort of belitting the people that, that did take the time to show up. It would be much more correct to state the percentage of people as a total number of developed lots in the stu, in the study area. I mean, redeveloped lots, the total number of lots that have actually been subject to large home construction. What percentage of people in those areas showed up, not the percentage of people in the whole of the study area? Not all of the lots in the study area have been affected to the degree that someone would complain yet. And I do believe that all of the phone calls and/or conversations that all of you have had since 2012 or earlier, pro and con, should be somehow collated or included in the response rate, not just the number of people that take the time to go to an open house. It just makes it seem like nobody cares. I loosely applied the perimeter heights, the, the proposals for the new perimeter heights to the homes already built at 2130 and, 2130 Lyons Court, whose address has now changed to 2128, and 870 Thermal Drive. If these homes were built using the new parameters, I think you'd still get people complaining. It's good, but it's not addressing that roofline height and the, the lot coverage that can The rest of my enclosures are attached. You could read through them. I don't want to take too much time in closing until convoy supplies starts to stock invisible shingles. Monster house issue in established areas is still going to be with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I let you go over, and I also let you preamble a couple of those sentences with, "This isn't part of the amendment," but...
Yeah. I shouldn't have done that.
Shouldn't have done that. So, I rule you out of order, which had no consequence whatsoever. But I'd urge everyone else, we, we've got to, we've got to stick to the actual things in, in this, and if you have some other concerns...
I, I did delete a bunch of other ones on route, but...
Appreciate it. Well, and you, and you let us know in the past about your own preferences related to how we, how we manage these and the 11 meters and all that stuff.
I accept you letting me talk. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. That's the only registered speaker I had for... Oh, stay right there, because Counselor Wilson has some tough questions for you.
We didn't hear enough of you, so I asked a few questions. But I want to start by thanking you for how passionate you are about this issue and how much work you've done, just in your research, but also in, in talking to, to most of us for, for, about this issue. It's my understanding that the, the rules that we have, I'm sure that the roofline is still 36 feet max, but it leads to much more pleasant-looking houses, and if we lowered the, the, the maximum height, we would get more boxy-looking houses, and the ceiling, the second floor ceiling would still be as high, but the roofline may not be as peaked. It might be more flat, and the houses may not look as visually appealing. What, do you have any preference there?
Well, I think I could respond to that. It's the first time I've heard it said that way, but I would much rather look at Mount Garibaldi and a flat roof than a high-peak roof.
So, if you're looking at, say, across the street rather than your neighbor...
And there's a lot of areas that, look, go over, I mean, a lot of areas don't have unlimited views, but pretty good. You can see over top the rooftops, and you can't do that anymore. So, my answer to that would be, I, I find the tall peaked roofs to be somewhat disturbing when they're all in a row and all identical.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. There you go. Thank you very much. And that was the only speaker we had registered. There's probably no one else that wants to speak to this, but I'll ask. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward if you're here to speak to this item. There we go. And we'll ask you, as Mr. Holowenki did, your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Stephen McEwan. I'm a resident in 943 Rochester Avenue, between, just off of Blue Mountain. I've lived there for 10 years. I own and reside in the place for 10 years. In the 10 years I've been there, of the eight houses that are in the circle around my house, across the street and across the alley, three of them have been torn down and replaced with much larger homes. So, I have had direct experience with the issues that are being discussed here, and frankly, I have really no interest in seeing the current set of rules changed. I see the changes that are being proposed, and I'm willing to accept that as a compromise. But I think that a lot of people have moved into these neighborhoods with an expectation that they have certain rights with respect to their property. Granted, they're not rights that are in perpetuity, granted that they're willing to be changed by zoning laws, I get all that. But people, when they buy those houses, they have expectations, and those expectations have a reasonable reliance attached to them. And when we bought that house, we reasonably relied that, you know, we would be able to do the same things that our neighbors have done. So, I'm not particularly in favor of having the rules changed so that the three of the eight houses around mine have been able to take advantage of the larger sizes and have some sort of monster home rule come in that's going to reduce the amount of changes that I can make to my own lot, not that I have any intention of it. I'd like my house, and I'm not really intending to change anything, but I would like that potential to be preserved. So, the rule that's in front of us is not particularly offensive to me. I don't really want to see it happen, but I get that people have concerns here, and I think a reasonable compromise is something that I can live with, and I see this rule as a reasonable compromise. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Hello, I'm Bruce Gibson. I live at 838 Rochester. My wife and I moved to Coquitlam approximately a year and a half ago. For her, it's, was returning to her childhood neighborhood. She grew up on Joyce, across from the school, so we bought the house five doors away from my in-laws, which is working out great. Our reason for picking southwest Coquitlam is we're drawn to the lot, yes, it is that line. Look in the back.
I wasn't laughing.
He's working on the tomatoes in my yard, but...
There you go.
It's because... But it's because we wanted to go with the larger lots, and our intention is to, we bought an old cottage that is a leaky, drafty piece of crap, and we intend to tear it down at some point. But we just don't have enough money. We could barely scrape together the money to buy the house. And our intent is, so we were drawn to this area because she knew it, she liked it, but also along in our area, a number of the homes, probably about half of them have been the old cottages, were torn down and replaced with much larger homes. Lots on our particular street are much larger than the one that was demonstrated, and I can't fathom building to a forty-five percent coverage ratio. But I like the new homes. The rules that Coquitlam has about making them not the big boxes that are all stucco that I've seen in other areas of the Lower Mainland, I think that they're quite beautiful, and I think they've done a very good job. I don't understand all that rules of the wall articulation stuff, but the results seem to be working out well. And I sort of look at it as if it's not broke, don't fix it. So, we do intend to build a large home, not up to the maximum, but in our intent, in our reason for that is that elder care is part of our future. My mother-in-law has some health problems, and so we intend to build a house where they live in the basement that would be walkout with an elevator, because she'll need it in the coming years. And having, chipping away at our entitlement, which we, part of what we believe we purchased, and of course, the rules do permit that, that's your function here, but having that chipped away at piece by piece is scary, because that's, you know, I went to the deep end of the pool, and my entire nest egg is in that little piece of dirt, and that's what we have, and our reasons are our own reasons. And I was one of the people that went to the Centennial Pavilion, one of the forty-four people, and as I talked to my neighbors about this issue, I really realized, most people had no idea what I was talking about, and really didn't think there was any problem, so why fix it? I thought the open house was done really well, I learned a lot, but I still don't understand the wall masking, and I guess I never will, but thankfully, there's professional designers that do that. The first gentleman, and just to rebut a couple of his points, referenced the Maple Ridge zoning, and just for my professional life, I happen to know the Maple Ridge zones very well. And the reason that the staff picked that one, I suspect, is it's the one that's relevant, the urban residential zone. Maple Ridge has a number of zones that are agricultural. We once looked at properties out there that were ten acres, and forty percent coverage ratio on a ten-acre, a five-acre lot minimum is of no relevance whatsoever. Their urban residential zone is the one that's comparable to Coquitlam. I don't know what portion of the city has that zone or any other one, but it's misleading to say that it was cherry picked. They probably picked it because it was the appropriate one. Other than that, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, my name is Dennis Kirkham. I live in the Ranch Park area of Coquitlam at twenty-seven fifty-four Daybreak. I really wasn't prepared to come here tonight. I'll tell you why. The Coquitlam Now and the Tri-Cities News no longer is delivered in my neighborhood, and it was only by fluke that I heard about the meeting tonight. But that, be as it may, there's a couple of points I'd like to make, actually based somewhat on the previous speakers. The first is, it's always been an advocacy of mine. I have previously made presentations to counsel and to members of staff on mega homes. But one of my major points was that I believe that real large homes, and I'm speaking four thousand square feet and above, including basements, should be, have a different zoning. I really don't think, when you get over four thousand square feet, that it's designed for a single-family home any longer. Certainly, most families today are anywhere from one to three children. And yes, there are those that have extended families, and that is fine. But there's still a lack of new housing in the older areas of Coquitlam that is affordable for a single family based with one to three children. The, I feel that if it had a different zoning, in my area in Ranch Park, all the homes in the Harbor Village area vary in size from a thousand to three thousand square feet, all of them. They all have a roofline that's the same, and lots above can look over the rooflines of the lots below. Now, there's two speakers from the area of Rochester, and also in Lower Ranch Park, we've already got a number of mega homes. What I propose is wherever this has already started, I don't think we should try and stop the trend in those areas where it started. In southwest Coquitlam, there is already substantial redevelopment. But what I'm concerned about is, in those areas such as Upper Ranch Park, where there has been no redevelopment, I don't want to see all of a sudden one or two monster homes crop up in the area. And I think if council was moving in the direction of a different kind of zoning in those areas that currently are not affected by mega homes, there could be a different approach. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor Zerillo?
Mr. Montempo, that I forgot to ask. I'd just like to start, though, just by saying thank you to the speakers that came up tonight, and I just wanted to point out that a number of the speakers tonight did talk about how the bylaws mean something to them, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that is why I am very much a stickler for not going into these variances, because we've just proven tonight that those bylaws are things that people rely on. I just had a quick, my question for Mr. Montempo is about the violations. So, if we are allowing over a thousand square feet face in lieu of violations, does that mean the only time we're going to have over a thousand square feet on the face is if there was a violation made?
Through the chair, the, at no time will a designer or an applicant be able to exceed the one thousand and one square feet. If there is a portion of the building that exceeds that forty-five-degree plane, that'll have to be taken into account as part of that thousand and one square feet. So, in other words, in the past, that would have been removed, okay? And now, it's permitted, but it's going to be incorporated into the total.
Okay, so, I see what you're saying. So, it doesn't matter even if it's jutted in or if it's out, it's still part of the thousand. So, what are the violations that we're going to allow, then?
By violation, do you mean the portion that exceeds past the forty-five-degree plane?
Is that the only violation that's possible?
That's correct. That's the only piece that designers seem to have difficulty with, is the portion that, for lack of a better phrase, pops out beyond that envelope.
So, we're going to allow, with this change, we're going to allow the violations, but what they have to give us in return is some articulation around the base?
That's correct, yes. And usually, those pieces of violation are roof peaks and fairly decorative parts of the building.
Okay, and you don't anticipate any other kind of violations that could come forward once we pass this bylaw? Because often what times happens is you pass a bylaw, and then there's another loophole found. Do you think there's any other violations that we're going to start getting into negotiation with?
We don't anticipate any others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Mr. Hollowanky had a point I want to ask. Is this another step in trying to handle the monster house issue, or are you considering this is the end thing? Because one thing we haven't addressed is how we don't have a maximum home allowed on a large lot. And that is a concern to me, because I can think of several lots that are probably fifteen thousand square foot plus, and I certainly don't want to use the FAR on those. So, this is just another compromise, I guess, is it? And we're still going to continue down this road of trying to regulate?
Your worship, maybe I'll respond to that. Thank you, sir. And Jim may want to chip in as well. At this point, and I should just preface that, that there was quite a process in getting to where we are today. I don't know if it was three and a half years, but we've been at it for a while, admittedly, because we did a lot of research. We did go out and canvass other municipalities and approaches that were taken there, and did try to get as valid comparables as we could. And we come forward to council at various occasions, council may recall that, with different options, a range of options, from custom-fit zones to neighborhoods, to really cranking down on the amount of billable area, which may have some property value implications, through to sort of a mid-road of refining and tweaking the bylaw. I think that's, in the end, where we got to. Through that process, at one time, we did look at the idea of putting a descending or decreasing cap on the billable area of the dwelling, based on lot size, but there was some drawbacks to that. I'll let Jim speak to that in a minute. Now, whether this piece now is the conclusion, I think, to our minds, it is for this particular process in the zoning bylaw amendment. Of course, you know, we will take council's direction on that. But I think getting more to the fundamentals and some of the things that Dennis maybe spoke to, and we've had this conversation, particularly at the open house back in May, there are other options, there are other ideas in these areas, to look at utilizing scarce land, and it doesn't always have to be one big massive large house that meets the bylaw requirements, but there might be other options in those areas. And I would like for us to be open to that, and again, at council's direction, we could continue to explore that over time, as our work program permits. But Jim, did you want us to speak to the diminishing building percentage as lot size
So, we did look, at one point, we reviewed site coverage as a diminishing proportion of lot size. And interestingly enough, when we went back and reviewed it thoroughly and looked at what our permits were producing, there were some really interesting facts that came out of that. In twenty-fourteen, we reviewed thirty, forty or so permits that actually went out, and we measured site coverage, and we also measured density. Although we don't use density FAR, we measured it. And lo and behold, what we were finding in these, the current regulations that we have in front of us, were producing site coverage between thirty-two to forty-two percent, which is ultimately three percent less than the maximum, and densities, in some cases, at point three, point three-five, reaching up to about point six, point six-five. And that's because of the current regulations and their limitations without having a density cap. And just by comparison, in the northeast, brand-new homes are at about point eight, point nine. You're talking about about four thousand square foot home on a forty-five-hundred-square-foot lot. So, you know, staff felt that the current regulations were addressing density on their own.
But we're not dealing with fifteen thousand square foot lots up there.
That's true, yeah.
So, hence comes two suggestions from the folks here tonight, and it's one with a separate zone. I don't know that that's the right thing to do, but I do think we have to start looking at some of these larger homes that are going to be coming forward to us. So, I'm not looking at this as the end of the large house thing. Thank you.
Okay, there's no question. I suspect that this is one measure aimed at solving one challenge that staff have identified, and I appreciate that, appreciated them identifying the challenge and finding a solution that, putting it before us. This doesn't, this doesn't address a bunch of other concerns that other people have identified, including through this process, and that's, and as you know, there were council members, including myself, that wanted us to explore some other ways of managing it, perhaps even taking the ninetieth percentile, or finding a way to identify a cap for absolute size, or something like that. But today, before us, is a fix to one issue, but not to all the issues. Okay? Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? And I'll ask a third time. Are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Thank you, your worship. Next item, item two, is an application to amend City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number three thousand, in order to rezone the properties at nine forty-one Stewart Avenue and nine forty-five Stewart Avenue, from RS one, one-family residential, to RT one, two-family residential. This is bylaw number four-five-seven-seven.
Good evening, your worship and council members. This subject site includes two lots on the north side of Stewart Avenue, between the Blue and Blue Mountain Streets. The site and area to the, and the surrounding area is designated neighborhood-attached residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site and the surrounding area is RS one, one-family residential. The site currently has two single-family dwellings. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT one, two-family residential in conformance with the OCP land use designation, to facilitate subdivision of the two existing lots into three single-family residential lots. Staff are recommending second and third, actually, all final readings to bylaw number forty-five seventy-seven.
Thank you, your worship, and I just would like to emphasize before you call for speakers that that is an adjustment to the agenda. The agenda reads second and third readings, but staff have determined that it is possible to give fourth and final reading this evening, so I just wanted to mention that early on.
Okay, the recommendation is adjusted. Later. I have one speaker registered, Lucio Picciano. The applicant's architect, and they're at...
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. I am the applicant representing the owners of the two properties. I am an architect, owner of DLP Architecture, and just want to present shortly here to reinforce our application. And in comparison to what has been talked about earlier, this application perhaps seeks to reduce the size of potential homes in the area by subdividing two into three, and thereby getting three smaller, single-family homes, with the potential for a carriage house at the rear of each. And this, if you look up here, there have been some concerns in the past about parking in these kinds of applications. These particular lots, if we look at the site plan, have lane access, which, if we look at the last slide in the parking plan, allows us to accommodate all maximum required parking in any scenario. So, we could keep parking and excess cars off the front of the street. Oops, go back. Go back to the first one, please. We see this as a evolution of what's happened in the last few years in the Lower Mainland. Rising land costs have caused the availability and affordability of housing to be unreachable for many people. This, we see, is not a very extreme way to add density to the urban fabric and also quality. By having an architect on board, I'm obligated to see the projects right through to construction, so rest assured that these are not spec-style houses, but they will actually be inhabited by the current owners of the property. So, they have a vested interest in the property, and in the neighborhood, and in the city, and they only want to see quality residences go up here. Our firm has both built and designed such smaller housing types all across the Lower Mainland, mainly in Vancouver, as you can see from some of the slides up here. So, we feel this application conforms to the mandate of the Millardville Neighborhood Plan. Plan, and would add quality projects to this part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Counselor Zerillo. Just one second. I thought you had a question.
I do, but I...
Mr. Poehl, come down in a second. But go ahead.
I just had a question about the 5.8 meters on the garage. And we just get a foot. Size, please. I'm looking at, I didn't do the math, but could we know what the, what's the width of those garages at 5.8 meters?
You mean in feet?
Feet.
Oh, in feet, okay. Someone's over there Googling 5.8 meters in feet.
I was going to, but it takes me too long to find my calculator. I see it's 18 feet for 5.4 meters.
Okay.
19 feet.
19 feet.
So actually, those double-car garages there are only 19 feet. Correct? The width of those two, yep. Those garages are only 19 feet. And there is no apron let down, as it says that in the report. So we're looking at potentially people parking in the front of the house. That's my thought on that one. Okay, so that was the one question. And I have a question about, is it forced that these subdivisions have to have back lane parking access? Is that absolutely a necessity if we rezone this? Or can we actually have front-loaded garages and aprons if we subdivide this piece of property?
Ms. Tiffany.
Just briefly, in certain situations where the lot width is a certain dimension per the zoning bylaw regulations, it does require access from a lane. So there's a minimum lot width that's required in order, if you don't want access from a lane. In this particular instance, the minimum lot width for accessible lane is what is being invoked here.
So can you give me the number? Sorry, because I see these are 12.19 meters.
Precisely. That was just what I was about to do.
Thank you.
And perhaps, Your Worship, if I could, well, Erica's looking up those numbers. Yeah, it goes by lot width, where you get down. And logically, as the lot width gets narrower, it's more feasible to have the access directly from the lane, because basically you're just taking up the back part of the lot with vehicle parking, be it in a garage or a parking pad. And, because we see the reverse challenge elsewhere, and this is actually a northeast Coquitlam, where there is the ability to have front access off the roads. But again, you get down to a certain minimum width, where it gets very, very difficult to design an attractive house with reasonable two-car garage, plus a front entry and front room. So there's, again, you get to sort of a limited width that you can, you can work with a front access. And even in those instances where you can include the garage as part of the dwelling, then the driveways there, and that then leads to tandem parking if you're trying to provide for the third parking stall, as opposed to using the full rear flange of the lot, where you can have then room for three vehicles to park along that, that rear side.
Just in follow-up to Mr. McIntyre's comments, the minimum width without an accessible lane for the RT1 zone is 12 meters, which they are not. But as Mr. McIntyre pointed out, this does provide for that elimination of the two existing driveways that are along Stewart, with the, with the new accessible lane.
Okay, sorry. So these ones, these ones say they are width of 12.19 meters, no?
That's correct.
So it has to be 12 meters. So these are over the 12 meters, no?
That's correct.
So these ones could have front-loading garage?
They, they could. But as Mr. McIntyre pointed out, is that what we tried to do through the subdivision development servicing bylaw, to try to encourage accessibility onto the site, and to encourage maximum opportunities for parking, we're always encouraging access from a lane where there's an accessible lane. So by doing this, it helps to eliminate the two driveways that are currently located on Stewart Avenue. So it creates more opportunities for parking along Stewart, as well as in addition to the parking on the backside of the lot.
And thank you, Ms. Tiffany, because I understand that. And one of the things that came into my mind when I was looking at this subdivision and some of the other issues we've had in town, is that when, with this sort of back-loaded parking like this, it's actually the city that is creating parking issues on the front street, because we are now building parking on the front street. And I can't see these back lanes being used through the day, when we're dropping off kids, picking up kids, getting groceries, those sort of things. And I worry about the security of being in the lane. So, yeah, that was one of the things that came to my mind, is I'm actually, and that might not be for this exact subdivision here, but I'm really thinking that the city shouldn't be supplying as much off-street parking, or on-street parking, as possible. That's not, that's not our role. And I think that we need to consider front-loaded safer as we increase density in these neighborhoods. We need safety. We need lighting. We need eyes on the street. And I would even like to look at single-car garages. Coquitlam was built on, in this older neighborhood, on single-car garages. And if we're going to get people out of their cars, we're going to need to start thinking about new, new options for that. But anyway, thank you for all that information. It makes me think a little. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to go to Counselor Reed. We're going to call for speakers again. But go ahead, Counselor Reed.
Just a quick one. Why are we not moving the parking up towards the house, so that we have an apron at the back for extra parking?
The parking layout that was included within the report attachment is just one option. It's a, it's an option that meets the zoning bylaw requirements. This is the option that was put forward by the applicant. It does not preclude alternative options, which would include potentially attaching the garage to the single-family dwelling to create a larger apron. But this is what the proponent has suggested, which does meet the zoning bylaw requirements.
And they're asking for a final reading tonight, correct? On this one?
That's, that's correct, because there's a subdivision application that's associated with this.
So that doesn't help me if I wanted to hold back form and function, or whatever you want to call it?
It's always at council's discretion to hold a bylaw at second or third reading, or whatever readings it feels is appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I'm hesitating a little bit, because the council has, and the city has, a position that where possible, we try to get parking onto the lane, which allows for more parking in a community. We know that parking is a challenge. And Counselor Reed just raised the question as to how do we get more parking? I'm, I have no difficulty with the idea of parking on the lane, or, and with the idea of trying to encourage the development of an apron wherever possible. My challenge here, and I'm wondering, they've chosen one point, it looks like 1.85, but I'm, meters on the side yard. Is that a setback requirement, or?
Your Worship, no, it is not. The minimum requirement for an accessory structure in the RT1 is actually 1.2 meters.
I thought so. And as, in other words, there's room for a 20-foot garage. My challenge, and we're going to eventually have to deal with this, and it's been raised in other contexts, and particularly up on the, up on the mountain, how do we, how do we get an inside dimension that's workable on a two-car garage? Otherwise, we end up with the car, it becoming a one-car garage by default, with lots of storage, and the person parking out in front, which is better than the situation in my neighborhood, for example, which is all front-loaded, without lanes, which means that after the garage is full, the two cars park in the apron, and the third car is out in the street, and there's not enough room between driveways, and all of that, that challenge. And, and I guess, potential conflict between neighbors. So I'm leaning toward Counselor Reed's suggestion as to asking the proponent to contemplate an apron of even three meters, to try to allow for at least some, some temporary visitor parking, or something where, where it becomes necessary when the, when the road is full. But anyway, we're here at a public hearing. So, Mr. Poehl, step forward, please.
Good evening, council. Mayor Stewart, my name's Albert Poehl. I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. This proposed densification follows on a densification none of us, or most of us in this district, weren't even aware of. And that is that every house is allowed a laneway house, or a suite. There's no such thing, as you were saying, as a single-family house in Coquitlam. It's long gone. What you're proposing here is to take and make it six families, three lots with two families in each lot. Why do I object? Because at this time, we want to be good neighbors with U.S. Minister. And we should be good neighbors with Coquitlam. But I'll leave that aside on this densification at this moment. We must get our transportation problem solved first. Last Monday, for instance, they're going to add, with six houses, three lots, you're going to add 12 cars. Last Monday, for instance, illustrate the problem this creates. From Allard Street on Burnett to Bray Street, at 8:04, I started at Allard Street. It took 19 minutes to go four blocks. You talk about congestion. You talk about the community we live in. Like, this complete, total densification, without building the proper infrastructure, is wrong, and we should stop it now. Now, council, I don't want to remind you, no one, not one of you stood up at the last election and said, "We're going to densify and increase taxes." And I am annoyed that you keep, every couple months, I got to come and talk about densification. I see not one new road, not one new intersection. But what I do see, within where I live, in a three-block radius, 27 monster houses with suites. No wonder, until you're going to get a transportation plan, please do not bring any more densification issues up. Thank you for your patience, and I will be back when we get to the next item on the same issue. And by the way, on Stewart Street, I don't know if any of you's driven by. If you have, what's the problem? I'll tell you what it is. All the boulevards is paved over for parking. They don't even park in the rear where they got alley access. Thank you. Any questions? Never is.
Well, this, this proposal will make it so there aren't two monster houses here, I suspect, if we approve it, because that's the intent. Ms., Counselor Zerillo.
I had another question for staff. It was mentioned in the report that there was community feedback done by the proponent, and I'm just wondering if we have any of that community feedback. I was looking forward in the report, and I didn't see it.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, my, my understanding through the file manager is that, yes, the applicant went out and had conducted some consultation with the neighbors, just to inform them of the application moving forward. It's something we are consistently asking of our applications, especially for these neighborhood attached residential areas, where these kinds of proposals are going forward. My understanding is that they did conduct it. We did not ask for anything specific in writing to be submitted to us. They provide us with a verbal assurance that they did have those discussions, and that on, on, in general, there were no objections. No, they know the applicant's in the audience. He might want to speak to that further.
Do you have a question for the applicant related to that?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't, I don't. It's, I'm going to cross that off.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? On Stewart Avenue, any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Now, on the next item, my wife and I want a piece of property about four doors away. It's not a requirement that I leave, but I am going to exercise an abundance of caution, so that no one thinks I'm in a conflict of interest. I will step out of the room for this item, as I did during its first reading, and I will not participate in this item. Our acting mayor, Counselor O'Neill, will take the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next item, item three, is an application to amend City Coquitlam zoning bylaw number 3,000, in order to rezone the property at 1016 Quadling Avenue, from RS1, one-family residential, to RT1, two-family residential. This is bylaw number 4588.
Thank you again, council. This site is located on the south side of Quadling Avenue, between LeBlu and Nelson Streets. The site and surrounding area is designated neighborhood-attached residential under the city's official community plan. Zoning on the site, and on two properties to the north, and generally to the east, is RS1, one-family residential. Zoning on the two lots to the north of the subject site, and to the south and west is RT1, two-family residential. The site currently has a single-family residence. The applicant is requesting rezoning to RT1, two-family residential, in conformance with the OCP land use designation, to facilitate development of a duplex. Staff are recommending second and third readings to bylaw number 4588.
Thank you, Ms. Tiffany. Are there any speakers to this item? Please come forward. Thank you. Ask you to identify yourself, name and address, please.
David Ruckel, 1017 Alderson Avenue.
Thank you.
My concern is, will the proposed monster house bylaw be a concern for this property? There's no real details on how big this is going to be.
So we can't talk about one bylaw that we've already finished talking about, and we're not legally allowed to talk about that? So, and specific questions about this bylaw, about this bylaw amendment?
Um...
Sorry, rezoning.
Just the size of it, just, is that all I need to know, all I want to know?
Sorry. Just about this bylaw. Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please approach the microphone. Oh, while Mr. Poehl is approaching, Counselor Wilson has a question or a comment.
I was just wondering if our staff could answer the gentleman's question about size of the building on this property.
Your Worship, or Mr. Chair, you're quite correct. We don't want to get back into reopening the bylaw that was the first item in tonight's public hearing. We can speak to the gentleman offline. I think there's a, there's a reasonable answer for him about that. For that application, the proposed duplex on this lot relative to bylaw number one tonight.
And I don't know if it really pertains as much to the first item on the public hearing. It was, I think, more generally the size of the building that he was referring to.
If that's the way the question's been interpreted, yes, certainly in the RT1 zone for duplexes, there's the same sort of stringent requirements in terms of building design, articulation, and height, and... articulation, height, and as described earlier.
But the package that the public have received have been the same package that we have here with some of the drawings, have drawings in your package? Maybe that's part of the problem, yeah. I don't know what the process is, sorry.
The public hearing agenda is posted online. The package is the first reading report that was also posted online. And in notification and including the signs that go up, all references are made to the agenda and the materials that support it. It's just not possible to put out a...
Yep. Okay. Basically, it's typical duplex-looking building.
Are we able to show that, perhaps bring it up on Attachment eight and Attachment... But it's still, just the look of it, anyway, Attachment seven, eight. Perhaps are we able to put that up?
I have mine here if you want to.
Should I use our fancy new dog camera for the first time?
Very nice.
Did I give you the back of it by accident?
So, I wonder if, with this now question refined, does Mr. Rocco want to ask questions about this particular design? Well, at least, not the height or anything like that, not the aesthetics, of course. We don't talk about that. But was there, and thank you, Counselor Wilson, for clarifying it. Okay. And thank you, Mr. Boye, for waiting. As we get Mr. Rocco back here.
Yeah, it's Mr. Ruckel.
Ruckel, thank you.
I think I will have more questions. I just did not see any detail, whereas the other proposal, there was some detail. So now that I'm seeing some, I'll certainly go online and look at it more closely. I just didn't know we could. I had no idea it was a side, two side-by-side. I thought it may be a front-to-back.
Mm-hmm.
I just didn't know that.
Okay.
Kind of the thing I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Glad we're able to do that for you. Counselor Hodge, did you have a question now?
Staff, just looking at the arborist report, I did a drive-by of this property. I actually drove by the previous one, but I have been looking at this one here. And my question is around the tree. It looks like it was, when I drove by, it was almost on the property line. I thought it was a cedar, but I think now here, it's actually, the report says that it's actually a, I think it's a spruce or something. But anyways, a very large tree. It looks like it's been here for many years. It's on the property line. I'm just wondering why that would have to, have to come down. This is something we always hear at these, when we're getting these development things come forward, is to trees. I'm just wondering why this one would come down, this particular tree. Recommended removal of four trees on the property. They're going to do, recommending replacement trees, but I'm just wondering why this one would have to come out.
Mr. Chair, I'll cover for Erica, as she looks through the file here. There is an arborist report. As noted in the staff report, and as typical with these applications, we ask the applicant to retain a professional arborist to review the property with an eye to, given the proposed building design and servicing and driveways and whatnot, what would be impacted if the development was to proceed in terms of the tree cover, but also with an intention to, if there's trees that are sound and desirable, can they be retained? And so, it's out of that sort of analysis that they would make recommendations. In this case, I think it was the removal of four trees on the property, which is then reviewed by staff and then confirmed. So, what's retained, plus there would be replacement planting, would then be the basis for the landscape plan, for the proposed landscape plan for the new development. But I'm not sure if Ms. Tiffany has the file information yet on the arborist report.
I'd be certainly interested to see that, because, you know, I know in a lot of cases there's a tree that's right in the building envelope, or it's a wind hazard, but it survived last month's windstorm. It looks like it's been there for probably 50 years. And I'm just wondering, in a neighborhood that is, you know, lacking in trees, why this particular one would have to come down?
Through the chair, if I may add. Just looking at the arborist report, and it appears that the trees that are recommended for removal are recommended because of, quote, "severe historic pruning treatments," such as topping and other permanently structural removals that apparently the arborist considers to be detrimental to the long-term health of these trees. So that is the determination, the arborist, in their report.
Not an arborist, but it looks fine to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll call for public speakers again. Mr. Boye.
Good evening, council and mayor. My name's Albert Boye. I live at 2340 Haversley Avenue, Coquitlam, B.C. I oppose the changing of that to a duplex lot. First of all, it's not a duplex lot. Duplex means two. What you're talking about there is four. And let me explain. I don't know if either one of you have driven by that property, but that whole street, again, the boulevard is paved over. To the right of it is a fourplex. To the left of it is another duplex, which I'm sure is actually a fourplex. What you'll end up there, and let's be honest, this three duplex is iterable. They're proposing single-family garages, which will be nothing but storage, and massive parking. We have some bylaws, I believe, in Coquitlam, but I could be wrong by looking at that street, let's say, how wide driveways are. Well, I'll back this project under one condition. You make sure everybody in that block adheres to the bylaws. If not, you're just creating duplex, duplex, duplex. High density and more problems that you'll be back here at June, just like Mike Duffy, wanting a raise in taxes, because that's all densification does, a raise in taxes. You'll be saying, "We need money for translating. We need money for a, to fix the Burnett Crossing. We need money to fix the crossing at Low Heat Highway in Burnett." I don't want my taxes going up for a problem you created. Please remember that, council. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this subject? I'm sorry, we have the staff wanted to address something?
If you, if you could allow, Chair, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I was doing some further review in the file, and it does appear that urban forestry does recommend retention of the two Serbian spruce that are on the front of each lot.
Ah.
Clarify that.
Thank you very much. Okay. Renew my call for anybody else. Please come forward, sir.
Thank you. Ken Paulowenke, 873 Thermal Drive, Coquitlam. That may have answered my question. I wanted to clarify the reason for removal of the trees. The only reason is because of topping and poor pruning practices. There's nothing at all relating to impaction of roots or anything with the building envelope or excavations. The only reason is topping.
You're asking a question for clarification there?
I was, yes.
Thank you, Chair. The arborist report, as I indicated earlier, references severe historical pruning. That's a quote from the arborist report. And the arborist concludes that as a result of that historical pruning, and these are for the trees that are in the back portion of the lot, not the two Serbian spruce that are recommended to be retained, has had enough severe pruning that it is detrimental to the long-term health of these trees. And I suspect, too, that what also comes into play here is the root zones. As these properties are developed, they are impacted, and it's very difficult sometimes with the building envelopes to retain and to protect those root zones, which also impacts the health of those trees.
If I may comment, that should be clear, clearly stated by the arborist, whether the roots will be impacted by the building excavation, or if it's a deep excavation, the shoring that's required to go up to the property lines. They would have stated whether the roots would be a problem or not. Which, I know sometimes they are. Most of the time, they are. If that's the case, this time, it is yet another, it's just another issue, another perfect example of, I don't even know if I'm allowed to say, large coverage, because it's, because of the first public hearing thing. I just wanted to make that clear, that that should be taken into account, whether it's because it has anything to do at all with the building zone or building envelope.
Thank you. Counselor Marsden, question?
Thank you.
Is it for the speaker, or...
No, it's for the previous one.
Okay, thank you very much.
Question for staff with regards to the comments from the previous speaker, suggestions with regards to there's a duplex with suites, so it's a fourplex, et cetera. Is there anything in our zoning that would prevent that from happening?
Through the chair.
Exactly.
Secondary suites are not permitted with duplexes.
Exactly. So, the allegations that this will contain secondary suites are not, do not conform to the bylaws that we currently have in place, correct?
That is correct.
And we're comfortable that our staff have the ability to ensure that that's enforced as we move forward?
That is correct. That is always something we're always quite diligent about with these duplex applications.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that we could, we had the pieces in place to prevent the concerns that the previous speaker was alleging. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for missing you around. I can't see your microphone down there, by the way. It's, see the red light go on? It's hidden down there. That's right, good, thank you. So, are there any other speakers? Or Counselor Wilson? There you go. Thank you.
Just trying to mess with you a little bit here.
Okay.
I just also wanted to confirm that this has no basement. It's a slab-on grade.
That is, that is correct. So that even further prevents that from happening.
In terms of the roof line, the house on the left, the lower part of the roof over the front door has a 412 pitch, and then the rest of the main roof is a 712. Would we have any influence on making the roof a 412 and having it sort of be less impactful, sort of along the lines of what we were talking about earlier?
Through the chair, I was just checking with our manager of building permits, because as part of the duplex DP application, these applications are referred to building permits to check the perimeter wall area and perimeter wall height regulations. And my understanding is that the current proposal does meet, actually, the new proposed changes. Shouldn't bring up the item number one, but it does meet those new proposed changes to the perimeter wall area and perimeter wall height. So, any further reduction in that pitch that you're referring to would be one of aesthetics, since what is currently proposed does meet the zoning bylaw. And it's something we could take away to the staff, because there's a development permit that's also associated with this duplex, in addition to what we typically do for looking at single-family dwellings for form and character. We could take that under consideration as a suggestion to potentially reduce that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other speakers to this issue?
I just want to say one more.
Okay, come on forward, as long as it's a new issue and you're not bumping anybody else out of there.
I'm very concerned. You want me to repeat my name in that? I will. I'm very concerned. That particular duplex, I hate to tell you, I don't know where you people have been, but that's exactly the one I would build, is a fourplex. And I've built many houses. That, gentlemen, makes it so easy to put the three-bedroom suite downstairs, just like that. And that's what'll happen. Yous really are serious about, no secondary suites. Go to the house on the right, go to the house on the left, before you approve this. Find out. Do your diligence and not keep handing it off. A densification is the holy grail. Thank you. Any questions on how you construct that? I'll tell you, because I've done it multi-times.
Thank you.
And I'll tell you, everyone has suites in it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this issue? Are there any other speakers to this issue? Are you coming up to the microphone, sir? Are you leaving? He's leaving. Last time, are there any other speakers to this issue? Then I declare this issue closed, and I believe the public hearing closed as well. Thank you very much. We'll take a short recess or adjournment, and we'll have a full council meeting.
About five, ten minutes?
Five to 10 minutes, and somebody can go and rescue the mayor from purgatory right now as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.